I'd like to call this meeting to order. Apologize for being a couple of minutes late. We have no clergy here today, so I'd like everybody to stand for a moment of reflection to get the spiritual strength we need to get each of us through the day.
Supervisor Parks would you please send the question?
The minutes of February 10th have been moved and seconded. We are now at agenda review.
Marty Robinson from the Chief Executive Office. Chief Executive Johnston is out ill today. Consent item number nine, you have a revised letter, new section on the fiscal, and an amended copy has been provided. Consent item number 10 is removed from the agenda. Consent item 13, we need you to move that to the regular agenda and eliminate Pacific Labor Services from the recommendation. Consent item number 23, you have a revised letter. Consent item 23. Regular agenda item number 33, we are asking your board to continue that for two weeks. And item number 37, you have amended copy provided.
Item 33, I know that we have, I thought we had the District Attorney's representative here. Mr. Bennett, if you're out in the lobby. Or is there another representative from the District Attorney to talk? I think they submitted a speaker card actually, and want to speak about item 33 and its continuation. Board members have any other agenda modification? Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I would like to discuss item 15 on the consent agenda.
Okay, so you'd like to pull that for discussion?
And I'd like to pull 14 for discussion.
So that I can, I can then just be clear, we are pulling item 10 from the consent calendar altogether. Item nine has been amended. Items 13, 14, and 15 have all been pulled to the regular agenda for discussion at this point in time. The item 23 has a revised letter under the consent calendar. And item 33, we have a recommendation of pulling that for two weeks. I am certainly supportive of that, but I know, do we have a speaker card from the District Attorney? And is it on item 33? Right, okay. So I think we will allow this, we'll allow the representative from the District Attorney's office to speak to that item as we decide whether to continue that or not as we come to that. Okay. Supervisor Michaels is in Washington, D.C. today, which is why she won't be with us today as we move through the rest of the agenda. We're now ready to move to the consent calendar. Items nine through 27 with items 13, 14, and 15 removed. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded the consent calendar. Any objection? Hearing none. Consent calendar passes. Let us now move to item 13.
It's our recommendation that you approve the item as amended by removing Pacific Labor contracts from that list of recommendations. There's a series of contracts being recommended on item 13.
Could you repeat your motion again?
Well, I recommend.
I mean, your recommendation? Yeah, thank you.
I recommend that you approve the letter as recommended excluding Pacific Labor Services contract from the approval list.
Great, okay. Any questions from the board members?
Could I ask a question? I was just curious, when we use advertising services, including that for outreach from the board and the air control district, we use the Daily Journal. What is the Daily Journal? I'm sorry. Is there any, okay, maybe someone can get back to me with that.
Okay. All right. We have a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion and seconded for item 13. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 14, Supervisor Parks, you wanted that approved?
I had a question on 14. As I read the item, it says, since, this is the Harvard Department, and since it's our practice to periodically test the market, they went out and did an RFQ for a concessionaire. And as a result, we are using the same concessionaire, but we're paying them $1,000 less a month. And that, to me, comes out to, over the period of the contract, about $50,000 less than if we hadn't gone out for RFQ. And I don't know why we would be paying less for something that we are currently getting. To me, you'd ask for more as years go on, not less, so I just wanted a response.
You mean, they would ask for more?
Pardon?
They would ask for more, is that what? Well, what's happening is it's just become more competitive. There are now two fuel docks in Ventura Harbor, so they wanted to concentrate more in our harbor, because they're doing one of the two in Ventura Harbor. So they're going to work it themselves, whereas they've previously contracted with other people to actually work, do the labor of the fuel dock.
Maybe I'm looking at this backwards. I thought that the concessionaire is paying us.
No, we pay him.
Ah, so we are getting a better deal.
We're getting a better deal.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and move the item.
Moved and seconded, item 14. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 15.
Item 15, let me make sure I'm ready here. This is an item, as you can see, a concession agreement for Channel Island sport fishing. My concern with the item, even though it's My concern with the item, even though it's for one year, is the county's ability to break the contract in the event that the voting and, in the event the BISC should go on the east side. That would be the ideal location. And my concern is that once you get a lessee in there, it's going to be fairly hard to remove that lessee, even though it says 60 days. So I would ask Mr. Chairman for the County Council to discuss the 60-day issue that the lease can be broken within 60 days. Is it, is it a strongly written?
County Council?
It would appear that the contract is terminable on 60 days' notice by either party without cause.
Without cause. Do you feel comfortable with it?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the harbor management a question.
Ms. Crigger?
Is this going to create a problem in the event that the Coastal Commission and Voting and Waterways, which are two agencies under resources, resources at the state level? Are we creating a problem here in removing flexibility, removing an option for the BISC?
I don't see any, any problem with it. It is cancelable in 60 days, so any option that was open is still open.
How is the lease going to be issued?
It's not a lease, it's a concession agreement.
How is that going to be issued?
I'm not sure that I understand the question, but we, basically, it's just the agreement that is here, and we both sign it, and then he manages, basically, just the tackle shop and sells the tickets for the boats, but we still have the docks.
You know, you look at that restaurant and building there. I looked at it this morning to refresh my memory. It looks like a restaurant, a bombed-out Baghdad restaurant is what it looks like. And that whole east side looks horrible. We've got to do something about it. I'm going to vote against this with the idea that, once you get a agreement, it's difficult to get out of it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I do. I was wondering, you know, we have a harbor commission.
Yes.
And I would get, I would be able to get more information, I think, or the potential for more information, if the harbor commission was able to give us their opinion on items such as this that come before us. So, just like we have the Aviation Advisory Commission Committee that goes and looks at leases and other items before they come to the Board of Supervisors, it's always nice to have that extra citizen input, I think. So I would just request that we allow these things to also get vetted at the harbor commission.
Well, I can check with the director on that, but in the past, oh, good, she's here.
What we may want to do at some point is bring forward the ordinance that controls the harbor commission. The airport authority is an entirely different body that does have some actual power to make decisions. The harbor commission is actually restricted to budget and marketing and does not currently do the leasing. There's a reason for that. They can't meet in closed session for any kinds of discussions. It's not allowed by the Brown Act, and negotiating in public with a public body is very difficult. So what we may want to do, if you'd like more input on these matters from the harbor commission, is bring forward that ordinance for review and amendment.
I would like that, because, you know, it's, particularly when you have such contentious issues at the harbor, it's nice to be able to get, if there's another body out there that's formed that looks at harbor issues, they might as well look at all of them and things that, particularly things that are coming to the Board of Supervisors. So I would like to be able to look at that. I don't know if the rest of the board is interested.
You know, the harbor, the commission ought to ferret out all the issues and identify them for the board, and we're not getting that with this particular case here.
Okay, we can, we can put that as an item in next year's budget, and if the board so directs, do that as a, as a work item for next year.
Oh, wait, hang on a second. Why, why a work item for next year? Why not just ask the commission to review these things? That's why we have a commission.
I think I understand that we have, we actually have a policy, a board policy that, that directs to that not be the case. So we have to change board policy so the commission can do that. That's, that's simply what I think the request of Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, we can submit it to County Council and see if they think, that's what I've been advised to date. If they think otherwise, we can go ahead now.
Sure.
I mean, as I look at the governing resolution of the harbor commission, the functions and duties of said commission shall be to advise the Board of Supervisors on budgetary matters, planning and development of harbor business and recreational activities, and major operational maintenance issues and policies. So it sounds like this is potentially within their purview already.
Yeah, leasing is specifically not listed, and I understand there's a historic reason for that, but yes.
This is not a lease.
That's right, this is a concession agreement.
Yeah. It's something that I would hope the harbor commission could review and ferret out all the issues with it, because some things, maybe I'm not seeing here.
So we have, we have one question, which is, are we going to change our policy? And I think Supervisor Parks, you're, you're saying you'd like to have that happen, and so I think it should be a future agenda item, and I would encourage you to work with the CEO and the harbor commission, I mean, the harbor department, to figure out when that comes to the agenda, et cetera. We have this item here at this point in time. Supervisor Flynn is opposed to this. Do we have?
I would move the recommended action.
It's moved, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, because I think within 60 days, we'll, we'll certainly have already known whether the BISC is going to be looked at for that side.
It's been moved and seconded. There's one objection. Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah. If you review the Channel Islands harbor successes with leases and agreements, you'll find that lots of trouble has occurred with the leases and agreements over the years. I mean, we just went through a whole experience with Channel Islands Yocuba. We went through a whole experience of getting back the lease from what was Tiger. We could not find a way in the lease to make Tiger produce, and yet Fisherman's Wharf, which was under their supervision, lost all the subtenants practically, except two. Several subtenants left there. We could not do anything because of the lease on getting them to repair the parking lot the way it should have been prepared. We went through arguments after arguments with County Council, your predecessor, trying to find a way to get Tiger to produce. The lease wouldn't allow it. I'm just very reluctant to move something here that would close off an option for, for the BISC, and that's the way I see this.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we have a motion and a second, and there is one objection to that motion. The motion carries on a three-to-one vote. I'd like to go back now, since Mr. Bennett is back in the room, to agenda review and the issue of item 33. Request for a two-week continuation. I know you want to speak to that before we actually decide to do that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Members of the board, Mr. Chair. I wanted to make a couple of comments, because of phone calls we received yesterday afternoon. I made the effort to call each one of your offices and waited at my desk. I spoke with representatives from Supervisor Flynn, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Long, and Supervisor Michaels, and I understood there was a couple of questions about the item that are related to indirect costs. I answered those questions, spoke to the city manager's office in Thousand Oaks, and the district attorney would like this matter moved ahead today. The reason to move it ahead today is that it's been some time since we did what the board asked us to do. Remember, back in December of 2002, we lost a GVS grant to fund a GVS community prosecution program, Thousand Oaks? We came to your board, we asked for additional funding, and it wasn't there. So you asked us to go to cities and seek the funding, and we did that. And through the gracious efforts of the city of Thousand Oaks, they've agreed to provide the county of Ventura the payment for services that amount to $181,000 for two years. If there's a question about adding indirect costs, originally, the grant didn't cover indirect costs, because the grant itself provides for the payment of services, not process, and that's really what we're concerned about. So I would urge you to go ahead and move the item forward today, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Is there anything that's going to go, is there any, is there anything that has to happen today? If this exact same item comes to us in two weeks, nothing will change. We've been in this contract since last July, is that correct? I mean, we've been.
Well, the contract was effective July 1st, and is anything going to happen? Well, the city is concerned about this entire questioning of what's going on to date, and we are as well, that we're concerned that the delay may result in other issues that I don't know about right now that could cause the entire matter to be dissolved by the city of Thousand Oaks, and that'd be terrible. It'd be terrible for the citizens of Thousand Oaks, as well as all the east county residents that depend upon us to provide a senior attorney, a very experienced attorney, to review cases, to handle community meetings, to go out to the schools and talk to kids about gang violence, and, you know, if that were to end, that would be bad. Would that happen in two weeks? I can't answer that question, but I, like I said, I did speak with the city manager's office, and the impression I got was they weren't too happy about the matter being continued, and, you know, they're available by phone as soon as you let me know what you want to do. It's too bad Supervisor Michaels isn't here today, but if you're going to continue, and I guess you have that right, but the district attorney wants it to move forward, and I believe strongly that you should just move forward on it today. This is a situation where a city did exactly what you asked them to do, and they stepped up to the plate, like the city of Oxnard did, too. They, as well, provided revenue in a similar GVS program, and it's going great guns, and things are working well, and we want to see those kind of relationships continue.
So I can appreciate that if, if, if there was a change here and the cost was going to go up, the city of Thousand Oaks would, would be concerned with this. But if it's simply a request saying, there hasn't been enough time to analyze this, and this requires a four-fifths vote.
Well, the CEO tells me there's been plenty of time to analyze it. In fact, they're the ones that believe that this should move forward today, according to both Paul Dursey and Frank Chow, because I spoke to Frank Chow yesterday.
Excuse me, excuse me. I speak for the CAO's office at this point in time, and I requested that this be, in fact, continued for two weeks. So that is the request from our office.
Oh, well, that's not what I was told.
The, if I could just finish one thing, Supervisor Flynn, and then I do, and that is that, you know, and that's what this really comes down to, I think, is just simply a request for more time. This is, this is an item that requires a four-fifths vote.
Right.
There are only four of us here. When you talked about the amount of time, I intended to have a, and I have a conversation with the CEO, Mr. Johnson, yesterday about this, found out that he was sick. I was moved, I had a very tight agenda all day yesterday, got home about 10:00 last night, did not have a chance to talk to him, and I expressed an interest in saying, hey, I have a host of things that I'd like to talk with him about with regards to this. And so I would join with the CEO's office in just asking my colleagues for, for us to revisit this thing in two weeks. That's not, I can appreciate that people always are concerned that something may come up, but that's not to say, but, but I'm not hearing anything that says this service, yeah, what's that, I mean, we're not, you know, we've been doing this since July, we're not going to, this isn't going to, you know, it's not like, hey, if we don't do this now, we'll be breaking the law or whatever. So that's, so I'm going to join the CEO's office in that request for, for that continuation. But Supervisor Flynn?
Yeah. These contracts really have me concerned, especially the contracts that the sheriff has with cities, providing services from the sheriff's department. This, and those contracts are with the county, and we really don't have the ability to manage those contracts, as I see it, because they're all lumped into the big sheriff's budget. I think where you're going is good, I just want to make sure that this is a contract or an agreement between the city of Thousand Oaks and the county of Ventura. And here it says it's between the Thousand Oaks and the Ventura County District Attorney. Contracts, I think, have to be, I asked County Council for that. Is, is this a contract simply with the DA?
We routinely ask the district attorney's office to make the contracts between the county and whoever they're contracting with, and not the district attorney's office directly.
So is this a contract with the county or the district attorney?
Effectively, the district attorney's office is not a separate entity from the county. In effect, in legal effect, the county is.
That might be in dispute. Anyway, these contracts really bother me, mainly in the sheriff's department, but am I sure that you're getting back every cent here, the cost, cost recovery?
Yes, the prosecutor's only working for the city three days a week, the other two, he works exclusively for unregular county functions. It's really a win-win deal, you know? It was your guy's idea, we just went out and did it.
And if I could, I do appreciate, this is a win-win.
Yeah.
Thing, and I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to, you know, you know, throw cold water on this. I think Supervisor Flynn's raising an issue about the contracts, and those issues have been raised. And so the request for the two-week delay is not, is simply to get that information, it's not to try to throw, throw cold water, or not to recognize that you have done what we've asked with, with this particular one. So with that, we have.
I just had a comment, and that is, you know, this is certainly something we do want to encourage, and I do appreciate that the city of Thousand Oaks did step up to the bat to fund this, and I'm looking forward to, to that funding, and I do see this rather as a routine measure, but if, you know, members of the Board of Supervisors have questions about this, and it isn't time, you know, there are no time constraints in waiting two weeks, I certainly can support the two-week delay in terms of just getting your questions answered. I feel comfortable with this, but I think, you know, certainly with the four-fifths vote, we want to make sure that at least four members feel comfortable with it.
Supervisor Long, you comfortable with it? So we're, we're going to postpone this for two weeks. We really appreciate you taking the time to come and trying to contact us, and my apologies for not being able to get back to you last evening.
Oh, that's okay. Can I ask you a question? Is there anything you want me to do in the next two weeks to, to maybe answer any questions preliminarily?
If I, if I, if I come up with anything as soon as I have my conversations, because I simply have, have to take time, if I come up with anything, I'll certainly call you.
Sure.
All right. I'll call you as early as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so item 33 will be continued for two weeks, and we have now moved through our consent calendar. And we are to our other regular agenda items. What's that? Oh, thank you very much. We are to public comments, and do we have any public comment cards? We have Bob Rossi from VCMC, or regarding VCMC.
Good morning, Bob Rossi, Thousand Oaks. I was wondering if any of the board members seen, last week, that the federal government Secretary of Health and Services Tommy Thompson came out with clarification that there's no federal rules against public or private hospitals from offering discounts to uninsured, underinsured patients. Now, since the county medical center receives Medicare and Medicaid funding, I'm not clear on how this policy's going to be implemented at the medical center. I've talked with some of the free clinics, and they seem to be unclear also when they have to refer their uninsured patients to the medical center for specialty care, they have no idea of the type of discount that patient might receive on their charges. I think it would be helpful if the medical center could come out with some kind of a rundown, schedule of the general type of discounts they offer. I think that would be helpful. The other thing that was in the paper also, that the Tenet Health Corporation here in California is selling off 19 of their hospitals. The main reason they're giving is that they financially can't meet the new state seismic standards. Now, as far as I know, Santa Paul Memorial Hospital currently does not meet the state new seismic standards. Now, if the county goes ahead and leases, then Santa Paul Memorial Hospital, I think potentially, there's a safety issue there for patients, and then also, it's unclear, will the county taxpayers be liable for the? will the county taxpayers be liable for the cost of the seismic retrofit? I think some of these are questions that the county taxpayers have no idea. And then I don't think, you know, because since 1988, I think the hospital hasn't shown a profit now. If the county leases the hospital, I don't think the county can guarantee the county taxpayers that it will show a profit. So, with the budgetary crisis the state is in, the county's in, people have questions if that's really the right place to spend, you know, county taxpayer dollars. So, I think if the board can make more public the financial information on the hospital, I think that would help, you know, the county taxpayers get a better idea of exactly the commitment the county's going to make to this hospital. We, you know, it's unfortunate that any hospital has to close down, but I think, if you look at where the, it's going, you can see in a group of about 40 physicians in Thousand Oaks are, right now, building their own new hospital. It's a General Acute Hospital. As far as I know, talked to the administrator, their board's policy right now, they will not accept Medi-Cal reimbursement. So, the Medi-Cal beneficiaries here in the county will now be able to use that hospital, because the state is allowing them to build a hospital without an emergency room. Now, they had the option, they could have built an emergency room, but they're not building an emergency room. So, the only way Medi-Cal patients can be seen there is they have the cash, which majority of them don't have the cash. So, in the Cago Valley, we need another hospital, but a hospital with an emergency room. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to testify, Mr. Rossi. Lee Quaintance?
What's that?
I said, "Thank you for taking the time to make your comments."
Yeah.
Yes, good morning. I'm Lee Quaintance with the Beacon Foundation. I'd like to provide some information that was not in the news articles concerning the Coastal Commission action last Thursday regarding the BISC. First, we wish to particularly thank Supervisor Flynn for going to La Jolla to testify as an individual. The fact that he was the only member of this board who actually worked on the 1986 Public Works Plan gave his testimony special relevance. The Coastal Commission voted six to four that citing the Boating Instruction and Safety Center at the preferred location is inconsistent with the Public Works Plan and cannot be considered as a notice of impending development. It was very important to several of the commissioners that its action not destroy funding for the project. Seen as significant by the commissioners, it seemed to me, was an email from the Director of Boating and Waterways indicating a strong possibility that the next milestone in funding, which is approval of working drawings, could be postponed by request of the agency to the Department of Finance. New information on funding was also provided by Commissioner Mary Nichols, one of the six votes. Her immediate prior position was as Resource Secretary, and the Department of Boating and Waterways reported to her. She indicated a level of comfort with the ability of Boating and Waterways to preserve the funding, and made the very important point that Waterways is a stakeholder, and it has a responsibility to make this project work. This is not just a county responsibility. There is no funding certainty, but there is reason to believe the funding can be preserved if this board brings a sense of urgency to this matter, and if you act now. This project has been on the wrong track. The Beacon Foundation wants a BISC, too, but not at the expense of parkland, habitat, view corridors, and respect for the integrity of the Public Works Plan. We are looking for a good outcome. We are prepared to work with this board to make something good happen. For anything positive to happen, we believe the board must directly take oversight and control of this project and take a new tack. I asked the clerk to pass out this scope of work page from the contract you approved on November 12th, 2002. This was a contract with a maximum price of $275,000. For the $275,000, you were to receive two complete environmental impact reports, one for the BISC and one for overall revision and update of the whole Public Works Plan. We have annotated this page using one pen, and I'd like to just point out to you, you haven't gotten what you bargained for. The first column is the work that was to be done on an overall Public Works Plan, and that called for a draft environmental impact report to be available in March of 2003, approximately a year ago. Of course, no draft has been seen, even to the current date, of an overall revision of the Public Works Plan. The second column concerns the BISC EIR and its due dates. This was to complete the entire process by March of last year, and as you will note from the section that has been marked here, you were assured that the preparer did not think there would ever need to be a Coastal Commission hearing on this if staff agreed that this could be handled as a notice of impending development. Actually, there was never any doubt that a hearing would be required. So, you haven't gotten what you bargained for. On December 16th, and not incidentally, through last Thursday, which of course does not include the costs of the hearing in La Jolla, you have paid out under this contract $290,191. On December 16th, 2003, this board upped the allowable contract cost to $390,000. You are faced with the need to intervene now, or just do nothing and watch another $100,000 be thrown after a failed process. We do not know what course of action will be pursued without your involvement. One possibility is to go back to the commission with Public Works Plan amendments tailored to allow the preferred site. We consider the outlook for success of such an approach as less than remote. Based on commissioner comments, we believe the chances are the commission would disallow the amendments outright, or require additional mitigations that the county would find very difficult to comply with at the preferred site. We urge you to agendize this whole project at your next meeting, and that this board consider options, including an addendum to the EIR that would qualify an east side location for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Quaintance. That ends the public comments. We are now ready for board comments. Supervisor Parks? Certainly. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the individuals on the list, which I will submit to the clerk, and just make a couple of comments about the Coastal Commission hearing and what I think we should consider. Number one, we should consider putting this on the agenda for next week, this whole issue, so that we can, we can find a way to do this thing right. If you were at the commission hearing, as I was, and listened to the commissioners, especially Pedro Nava, Mrs. Wan, and the former Secretary of Resources, Mary Michaels, you would, you would understand that the person giving testimony today on this issue is really correct. It would have a struggle getting an amendment. Here's what I think we should do, and I hope we'll put this on the board agenda and put several options on the agenda for the board to consider next week. Several options that will allow the board to move in a direction that it will be successful in getting this BISC built. The path we're on now is not a good one. We've really been let down, it seems to me, by number one, declaring that this simply would pass with a negative declaration, and that happened several times, several years ago. And three, or secondly, amendments to the Public Works Plan. It should have really gone for an amendment to the Public Works Plan, rather than going to this Coastal Commission without that and asking them to approve some conditions that their staff put on the project that were so severe and so substantive that it would never pass. I mean, it begged the question, "You've got to come back with an amendment." I want the east side considered, and I want it in a review of the, or with additional EIR that will have to be commissioned. I'm really concerned about the fact that the person who prepared the EIR did not look at it as a disinterested scholar. If you have a master's degree, if you've ever written any papers at all, you approach something in a disinterested way. If you're a reporter, you approach something in a disinterested way and try to arrive at a good presentation. This wasn't done. We had, we had a consultant here who was listening to every word that Ms. Krieger said about getting this project through. That's simply not right. Secondly, we need to ask the question, did our manager, Lynn Krieger, interfere at the state level with boating and waterways and get them to write the letter that came before us, practically the day before we heard this item? If, if, in fact, she did that, she was interfering with policymaking by the board. That was a policy decision, and she interfered with that. So, I would hope that we would get another item on the agenda. I would ask the CEO to present this item for next week.
Supervisor Long?
I have a list to adjourn in memory I'd like to submit to the board. Just noting, Donald Milburn, longtime resident of our county, served in our, for our country in the United States Navy, was a pioneer helicopter pilot, and very active in our community, was a Camrio Rotarian for over 25 years. And I certainly would like to just add the interest of having a full report from our staff on the Coastal Commission action as to testimony that was given and comments made, and I would, I too would be interested in understanding exactly what the Coastal Commission action means to this project and, and the Public Works Plan. Certainly wasn't very clear, and I think it is more complex than what was portrayed in the paper. So, I would certainly hope that between the CEO's office and the staff that we will get a very thorough report and what our next step and options are. I'm not sure that that can occur in one week. I have put in calls to the Coastal Commission staff, because I wanted to hear from them what, what was said and why the action, and what the action means. So, I certainly have an interest also in the results of this Coastal Commission hearing, and would certainly believe that this board will get a full report and will understand what our options are. Other than that, I think the rest of my comments just come with agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on the list that I will submit to the clerk, one. Two, on a happy note, I would like to point out to the other supervisors that she doesn't know I have this, but came across my desk yesterday. Supervisor Kathy Long received the VACIDA Spirit of Government Award on February 19th, and the VACIDA, and the award goes to Supervisor Kathy Long. Spirit of Government Awards presented to the person who exemplifies a private and public partnership, who recognizes that business and government must work together to remove barriers and find solutions to ensure economic vitality and quality of life. So, congratulations for, for that award. The, I would appreciate the comments about the BISC coming back and, and question in terms of when. I question whether next week, beginning in Election Day, is the best day for us to do that, but that's, that's, yeah, yeah. So, I think, I think some supervisors have something else on their mind that, that day, and whether that's the appropriate time. So, I would offer that into the mix as we, as we consider this, but I'm sure we will be having more discussion about the BISC as we move forward. That's it on board comments, except for Supervisor Parks and her, and her senior moment is now...
Not 50 yet. Not yet. I might ask that the board close in memory of the people on this list. I want to congratulate Supervisor Long for her VACIDA award. Well, well deserved, and also I see this, I see it as an opportunity what the Coastal Commission did regarding the BISC. I think it's potentially a very positive opportunity for the, for the board, and look forward to having that back before us.
Thank you very much. Any other board comments? We're done with board comments. We're done with the consent calendar. We have 10 minutes. We will be able to handle a few of our regular agenda items. We have a representative of the district attorney's office here for item 32, approval to accept grant funds for the expansion of the Forensic Computer Lab on behalf of Southern California High Tech Task Force.
Good morning, Chair. Board members. Mel Chambers with the DA's office. The item before you is a one-time increase in revenues and appropriations to cover some work that's going to be done at the Camrio High Tech Task Force location. It's pass-through money from LASO from OCJP. It's a very worthwhile project, deserves support.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Been moved by Supervisor Flynn? Seconded by Supervisor Long? Any objections? Motion carries. Item 32's passed. Item 33's been pulled for two weeks. Item 34, recommendation of myself to appoint Joan Adams to the Ventura County Area Housing Authority. I'd move that recommended action, second. Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. And then, item 35, recommendation of myself to, to adopt the revisions to 2004 Ventura County Board of Supervisors assignments, and I might take this opportunity to compliment, I think the clerk is, was really, since January 1st, really been trying to clean up our processes and, and our appointments, and reviewed that thing, found some, some of the technical errors and modifications and stuff, and so I commend her for doing that. So, I, I would move...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I did look at this, but didn't catch it until late yesterday. The Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, it's not an authority. It's an alliance, is the official title of it, so it needs to be changed.
Can we make that change? So, you want to move the action with that, with that modification?
Do they make one modification, too?
Yes, Supervisor Parks.
It's the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, not Santa Monica Conservancy.
Thank you. We are, we are rapidly cleaning, all right, this list up, all right? And it, I think you can see, there've been, many of these things have needed to be adjusted for, for quite some time. The, all right? So, we have a motion with those two modifications, and do you need those two modifications repeated, clerk? Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 36, we have, we have to have a double motion here with this. We have been working with our partners at VCTC, and in my conversations with the former chair, Mr. Millhouse, a council member from Moore Park, he's indicated that he believes that we can move forward with legislation that we can all agree upon if, if we are willing to accept this language with regards to the proxy. First thing we have to do, since we officially, the county council says to be extra cautious, we have to actually do a motion to reconsider. So, since I was in the affirmative, I'd make the motion to reconsider.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection? None, okay? And then... And then, I'd make the motion that we accept the, the recommendation here regarding the proxy.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 36, both the reconsideration and then the motion. Item 37, recommendation Supervisor Parks to appoint Sue Brooker to the Aviation Advisory Commission.
Yeah, I would request that I make a motion that Sue Brooker be appointed to the Aviation Advisory Commission.
Been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 38, Supervisor Parks.
Yes, this item is regarding Santa Rosa Park. The county purchased the land for the park some 36 years ago with state park bond money, with the full intention of making it into a park. Since then, the county has received $253,000 from an agriculture lease of that future park site for development of the park, as well as a Proposition 12 grant for Santa Rosa Park of $275,000. So, essentially, we have bought the park site with park bond money, and we have $528,000 set aside for Santa Rosa Park development. The issue I'm bringing before you is, in order to get the Proposition 12 funds, we have to waive a policy of the Board and certify that we will provide revenue for the maintenance of the park. I do want to note that ironically, that the amount of maintenance money, about $11,200, is about what's being spent presently just to maintain the undeveloped park site, to remove debris and weeds, and, and people have been dumping on it. So, I, I see this kind of as a, kind of perfunctory in the sense that no extra funds are, are going to be expended. I compliment GSA for being able to really go to the, you know, look at this thoroughly and find out, make a, a good estimate of how much would be spent for maintenance. It includes having a, a permanent host on-site, which considerably reduces the amount of costs that otherwise would have to be paid for maintenance. I know this is something that has been in the works, obviously, for some 36 years, and by the time it's developed, it will be about 38 years since the park was originally intended to be built. I, I wanted to also, if I may, talk about the support for this park. Certainly, the Santa Rosa Valley community is very much in support of this. The, the Santa Rosa Valley Community Association wrote a letter to us in support of it, as well as some four dozen emails that we've received, as you probably have noticed. And I, I actually was rather surprised at that, but what I, where this is coming from is, you know, the, the equestrians, and they are, they, they not only ride horses, but they have computers, too. And I know this horseplaycentral.com, which I got a hat from, helped to let other equestrians know that this proposal was before us, and as you have noted, there is considerable support for it. So, I, I am really looking forward to having this move forward. I see not only this beautiful land being made into a park, but I know that further down the line, the Watershed Protection District is looking at the creek that runs in that area to put a three-quarters of a million dollars they need to spend in creek restoration. So, this, this can turn out to be a wonderful project, and it's, you know, a great idea to have it be for equestrians, too, as well as hikers and people who enjoy open space, because it's right at the gateway to Hill Canyon and the Western Plateau. So, there's just beautiful trails and really no way to access them from the city of Thousand Oaks. So, it does do a lot, it does have a lot of benefits, so. It's a, it is, right now, right now, it, it's just a barren piece of land with a, an old park bench, but certainly, my recommendation, you mean in terms of public comment?
No.
Or open to the public? The park is open to the public.
There's a park open to the public, I think is what I said. Yes, right.
It's open to the public, and it, it will actually be used by the public with this, with this approval. I don't know if you have some cards on it, otherwise I'll just go ahead and make a motion.
We do have two Speaker cards on this. Any questions for Supervisor Parks before we take the speakers?
Just one quick question, because we've been moving in the other direction of divesting ourselves of parks, and I know that the, is it COSCA? Is that the term for the park district? Their territory doesn't spread to, to pick this up, or they don't have an interest in...
You know, COSCA is a joint powers authority of the City of Thousand Oaks and the Cano Rec and Park District. So, I don't know if they would expand beyond the City of Thousand Oaks. However, the Cano Rec and Park District has that potential of, you know, if they wanted to annex and move forward, and they are actually building up the Joel McCray Ranch property in the future, too. So, that, that is something I would certainly look at in the future. It has some good potential, also with trails, which is real strong in the minds of, of residents, and certainly the county doesn't have those kind of funds right now.
Yeah, I, I would offer, we, we, we have concerns usually with, with, I mean, with an issue like this, we have concerns about the precedents, and that is that now we, we have other parks come online that will, will be a, a future draw. And I think you have addressed that. Could you just clarify why we would not be viewing this as a precedent for other parks? So, I just want to get that, I want, I just want to clearly get that on the record, so when the next request comes, those people say, hey, what about this that we clearly have identified?
Well, I think, I think part of that policy has also to do with the, the development of parks, and certainly, we have a half, over half a million dollars to develop this park to begin with. As far as the policy saying that you shouldn't, unless it has enough revenue to maintain itself, I think that policy, when you have a situation when you're already expending that amount of money anyway for something that is providing absolutely no benefit, using that money to provide benefit, I think it would be a really good reason to waive that policy.
Good. Thanks for getting that onto the record. Mr. Burley.
Good morning. My name is Mark Burley. I'm a member of the Santa Rosa Valley Community Association and also Santa Rosa Valley Riders. First of all, I'd like to just reiterate the strongest support for our, from our community for this particular project. We've been working on it for 10 years, and longer than that, since before I was in the Santa Rosa Valley. But I would like to add one important thing in terms of the financing, and that is, at the moment, the county is spending money and not getting anything, and I think that the county will actually save money, because once you've spent this half a million dollars that you've got from these two funding sources, you will actually get revenue. And I think that revenue will offset the $11,000 to a point where you're spending less money than you're spending now. So, you're using these proposition funds to save money for the county. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, and thanks for keeping your comments short. We're working on our 9:30. Susan Gardner.
Good morning. I'll introduce myself. I think you know who I am. I'm Susan Gardner. I'm the owner, editor of horseplaycentral.com. We provide various outreach programs for the horse community in Ventura County, focused locally on only Ventura County. We have many horse-related organizations in this county that are looking for a permanent suitable home in the form of a public-run facility. I'm going to, I'm not going to list them all, I'll keep it short. The parks that are available to us now are rented on a daily basis at an average rate of $100, $150 per day, per event, with passive use in between. The parks we do have have been adopted by local riding organizations as home and are looked after and tended to by those same groups. Horse owners are very environmentally conscious, and we appreciate the beauty of our open spaces. With the limited facilities in our area has to offer, it is difficult to hold premium shows or to book accommodations, and the most participants, and most participants are forced to leave our area for competition. I have no doubt, when this park is made available for use, it would be booked for a minimum of 35 days out of the year. At $150 a day, we're looking at $5,200. If we book it for 35 weekends, that's $10,500. We've practically paid the bill. Quoting from an article written and published by the American Horse Council, "The State of California is Home to Over 600,000 Horses." According to the American Horse Council Foundation, "The horse industry provides over 36,000 full-time jobs and contributes $11.4 billion to the state economy." Several years ago, it was recorded that Ventura County was home to over 9,000 horses. With numbers like these, one would think Ventura County would want to attract more and accommodate those that already are here. As Supervisor Parks pointed out, this is, and it's staring us so blatantly in the face, the money is already being spent. Let's use it for an area that the community can use. And I'd also like to add some food for thought. The site was purchased and designated as a park ground 10 years prior to the adoption of the self-sufficiency policy. Had the park been developed then, this would be a non-issue. The equestrian park is not only needed, but it's a necessity. If the county does not begin to recognize those needs and the importance of the equestrians to our agricultural industry, horse owners will begin to move on to greener pastures. The comrades that serves them will be forced to move on as well, costing the county valuable revenue, coupled with losing the look and feel of the country life that makes Ventura County so attractive. 10 months ago, I stood here in the same spot, asking for your support, and you gave it. And though the circumstances have changed since then, the needs of the community have not. We need this park now more than ever. By approving this item, you will be demonstrating your commitment to preserving our open spaces and a testament to the fact that you are listening to the citizens of your community. I want to thank you in advance for your positive votes.
Thank you for taking the time to come down and testify, Ms. Gardner. That is it for the public speakers. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommended actions, 1 through 3 in the report.
I'll second the motion. I, I really want to attract the horse vote.
Supervisor, Supervisor Long.
I certainly support the motion and commend the Supervisor for your leadership in finding a creative solution to this and to get a good kickstart on it. Good work.
I think that makes it unanimous. We're all, we're all there for it. Congratulations. Motion carries. There you go. I think, and courtesy to our Treasurer, Tax Collector, Public Administrator, we'll take him very quickly before our 9:30 scheduled item so that he can get back to work. That's right. Plus, you're not used to an audience, and we thought we'd let you have it.
I, I don't know how to respond. This is just amazing, early in the morning and an audience, both.
That's right.
Larry Matheny, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Public Administrator.
If I could, if, if you will, if you are in the audience before a 9:30 like this, if you get my attention, I will try to do this, show you this courtesy as often as possible so you can get back to work and not spend all day.
I'll, I'll try to do that in a respectful and courteous way.
If I don't, if I don't see you, yeah, let me know. Great, thanks.
I am just here to answer questions. The return was 1.68%, so it continues to be in an area that is odd, but we look forward to better interest rate yields.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion. Move to receive and file. Any objections? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How about the correspondence agenda? Can we handle that very quickly? Second. Move to receive and file. Any objection? None. Hearing none. Now, we are ready to move to our 9:30 time certain item, and will you still be making the CEO's presentation?
Yes, I have a few comments, but you may want to take the...
Fine, okay, great. We will, good. We will, we will do the recognition of the gift donors of the Children's Services Auxiliary. This is always one of the more pleasant times of the year here in the boardroom, in that we have this opportunity to recognize those people that made gift contributions to the Children's Services Auxiliary and the Children and Family Services during the 2003 holiday season. It is a remarkably warm and wonderful thing that people in this county and this community are willing to step forward and remember that there are children out there that don't have families that are able to provide for them and, and give them that, that special gift during the holiday season. We have people that have stepped forward to do this. So, Judy Rivera, the Deputy Director of Children and Family Services, is going to make some comments, and then I will come down, we'll present certificates to the people in the audience. Thank you.
Great. Good morning, members of the Board. Ms. Robinson, thanks for having me here today. Just a month ago, I stood before you and talked about the importance of our community's involvement in helping our children here in Ventura County. So, today, I'm very happy to recognize the individuals and the groups and the organizations that contributed to the Children's Auxiliary Fund. Their help and their work and commitment to this cause resulted in the distribution of over 32,000 gifts to approximately 500, 5,500 children during the 2003 holiday season. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge some of the Children's Services Auxiliary Board members who are here today and ask them to stand. Joan Gendrow. Hi. Debbie Burgevin. Teresa Brummett. And Mary Kay Roth. Thanks for being here. Now, I'd like to introduce the groups and individuals that have supported the auxiliary in such an extraordinary fashion, many of whom are here today. When I call your name, please come down and receive your certificate and remain standing so that we can take a group photo. Do you want to hand out the certificates? We have Andrea Lund, representing Dr. Fahey Chiropractic. Mary Kay Roth and Pam Petrella, representing Avnet Cares. They were.
They were. They were. First one was that? Hold on. That's a parent, she was. Is that that one? Casey? There it is. There it is. Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading this.
Yeah.
All right. They are annoying. I can't read. Yeah. Special ed student at school.
Donna Volker, who's representing both the California Women for Agriculture and the Paul Jordan, representing Catalina Fleet One Sailing Club. Bob Adams from KBTA's Dave and Bob Show, and Steve Hess, Sales Manager, representing Jay Allred, representing Intercontinental Realty. J.D. Locke and Buffy Bartley, representing My House Lending. John Greenwald, Exalted Ruler and Jess Gonzalez of Oxnard Elks Lodge. Alice Love from Pacific View Mall. Janice Reynolds, Sun Air Aviation. Tom Berg and Marilyn Morrison, Ventura County employees. Jorge De Leon, representing Ventura County Astro Association. And Joe Luna and Fred Fonse, from the Ventura County Fire Department. I'd like to also just take a minute to highlight a community partner that has gone above and beyond in their fundraising last year. The Dave and Bob's Children's Fund raised more than $52,000. We are honored to have Bob Adams and Steve Hess from Gold Coast Broadcasting here today. Again, I'd like to thank all the community partners for your continued commitment to make a difference in the lives of Ventura County's court-dependent and needy children. Thank you very much.
If you would hold here just for one second, but I, one thing I do want to recognize is that you represent a lot more people because of all the organizations that are here than, than just the number of people standing in this room, and that's what is remarkable. Your organizations are very effective, and when you put them together, it's really a powerful gift for the children of Ventura County, so thank you. So, thank you. I think the board members may enjoy being part of this picture, so I'd invite the board members to come down. And if we could get, we need to be too deep here, and why don't we do it all over here? So a few people could come on over here, and we can use those steps, and then they'll be ready for the picture. So if you'll get yourself up on a step, or if you're shorter down in front, and supervisors, if you want to get yourself involved in the picture.
Thank you. You guys would join us outside. (Laughter). Swear I'm pushing the button. Oh, my gosh. Okay.
Okay, we will now move to the CEO's report here.
Well, there's good news and bad news. The bad news is there's a different face on the chair, but it's still the same glum message, as Johnny shared previously. You know, one of the pieces of information that he shared was that the state, the governor's budget identified 1.3 billion basically coming from local tax revenues and going to the Educational Realignment Augmentation Fund, going back to the state for that purpose. That meant for us, a $17 million cut next year and in perpetuity. So, that's still there. But the good news is somebody in Sacramento is paying attention, and the Legislative Analyst Office, and that's for the benefit of the audience, that's the independent office that provides review of the budget. She has identified that that's probably not the best way to go, which is very nice. And I'll quote from one of her, the LAO report. "This proposal raises questions concerning the state's role regarding property tax. In our view, the legislature should use its authority over this tax for the overall betterment of local government, not as a state rainy day fund. We recommend the legislature reject this proposal." Now, that doesn't mean that the legislature's going to follow that, nor does it mean that we would not have issues otherwise. But she does come up with an alternative, and her alternative is to include a reduction in local subventions in various programs, a reduction or a shift in some special district property taxes, and a shift in some redevelopment property taxes. So her position is that the property tax should stay with the local governments, and her report also indicates that counties are taking, under the governor's proposal, the counties are taking a disproportionate hit over cities. So she does that. Also, there is another report out from the treasurer, Phil Angeletti's, and he has proposed another alternative should, really dealing with the bond issue, the $15 billion bond issue. And he has proposed that the quarter cent that's being identified right now for retiring those bonds, that those in fact be used, that that be allocated over the next three years instead of for the economic recovery bonds, but to help fund the deficit, and that he is also recommending a temporary three-year restoration of the 10% and 11% tax bracket on single taxpayers. And those are taxpayers who earn more than $140,000 to $280,000 a year. So, maybe I have low standards for good news, but at least there's some dialogue going on up there regarding some alternatives, so.
Any questions? Supervisor Long?
Just certainly to concur with the report on this, it's the first time the LAO has actually called out the county situation. So I have to take whatever bright news we can get there and acknowledge that the counties have been the victim and also the contributor to the state in the sense of settling their fiscal dilemmas over the last 10 years. So, that is good news, and how it sticks and what it plays out for us, we'll see.
Supervisor Glenn?
Yes, I think the redevelopment issue there and the funding and so forth, I think it really requires a close look at redevelopment throughout Ventura County and how much, you know, we always talk about sharing sales tax. We're going a step further in our sharing of property tax. So I'm going to bring a presentation to the board probably in the next three or four weeks to discuss the impact on redevelopment funding in Ventura County.
Thank you. Anything else? That ends our regular agenda items, and we have one time schedule for 10 o'clock. We have closed session. Do we have a very brief, or is this a better time for us to take a break? Do we have anything very brief? Kind of counsel?
We could probably handle one of the matters in 10 minutes, if that be the board's desire, or take a break. There will be an announcement in all probability after the closed session today.
Okay.
The announcement?
Okay. The, all right, there will be, there will probably be an announcement at the end of closed session today. Board, do you want to cancel a closed session item? All right. Okay, we'll take a, we'll take our break as we walk in there then.[1047.58][1047.58](Laughter).
Okay. There you go.[1050.58]
Oh, yeah?
Board is back in session. We do have an announcement from closed session. County Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is in the matter of Yvette Lopez versus the County of Ventura Superior Court Case Number C I V two one five five seven five. The Board of Supervisors in closed session accepted a negotiated settlement in the above-mentioned litigation in the amount of $340,000. The case involved the inadvertent disclosure of the home address and telephone numbers of the victim of a robbery to the criminal defendant. The unintentional disclosure by a deputy public defender resulted in significant witness intimidation and resulting emotional and financial damages to the victim.
And County Council pointed out to me that I wanted to pass on to the board members if we have questions, we do have the option to refer them to our attorney.
Mr. Alan Wiskowski.
Alan Wiskowski, if there are specific questions about that case. I'll point out to our representative of the press that just came in, we just made an announcement from our closed session. In case you're interested about a case being, we just made an announcement about a, from our closed session and there is a written document here if you want to read it again. If you want to read the written document that County Council just read, clerk, you may want to hand that to them just very quickly for a second and then you can punch it in. Is that acceptable to you, County Council?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We will go to our 10 o'clock time certain item, this approval of acquisition exchange of real property for Lewis Road widening, tracks numbers nineteen F, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Good morning, members of the Board. I'm Steve Williams with Public Works Agency. We are recommending this morning approval of an exchange agreement between the county and Tom Vievich regarding exchanging county-owned excess real property for property that is needed by the county for the Lewis Road widening project. Under the terms of the agreement we negotiated, approximately 12.9 acres of excess county land will be conveyed to Vievich in exchange for approximately 14.6 acres of both fee and easement, public road easement needed for the widening. The value of the property, the excess property has been appraised at $590,200 and the value, appraised value of the property interest that we need from Mr. Vievich are appraised at $629.9. The difference will be paid in the cash payment to Mr. Vievich at the close of escrow.
Do you have any questions for staff? Looks like you're going to get off easy. All right?
Very good. Thank you.
Move the recommended action.
Moved and seconded. Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
That finishes all of our public items. I just need to know with the clerk, have we taken enough action that you'll be done as we go into closed session? Are you okay with getting that back from, all right, well, just remind the press that the clerk is awaiting for you to return that to him when you finish. Thank you very much. And meeting during the closed session or will there be any announcement from this part of closed session? There'll be no announcement. Thank you.
...